Good evening, everyone. It is 6:31 PM. I'd like to call this Venus Regular Council meeting to order. Ms. Green, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Alejandro Galvez.
Present.
Councilmember place one, Teresa Hoffman.
Present.
Councilmember place two, Mayor Potem, Tony Bovinich.
Present.
Councilmember place three, Cheryl Kaiser. Councilmember place four, Michelle Hamm.
Present.
Councilmember place five, Drew Wilson.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Green. If you would, please stand at the invocation by Mr. Halla along with the Pledge of Allegiance and Pledge of the Texas Flag.
Oh, thank you for that. Let's pray. Dear only Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you so much that you are the good and perfect Father, the giver of perfect gifts, with whom you have no variableness nor shadow of turning, as you've told us in your Book of James. We thank you so much for that because we know that we can count on you, we can depend on you. You'll never put more on us than we can bear. We ask now that you watch over the council, as you won't put more on them than they can bear. Let them continue to guide us and lead us, honor you, and honor the people and city of Venus. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to Section Two, Announcements from the mayor. Cell phones are to be placed on vibrate silent only. No conversation from the audience is permitted unless specifically called upon by me. Please remain respectfully quiet. Moving on to the citizen public comment period of three. Do I have any more, Ms. Green? Okay. First one I have is Mr. Vasquez. Would please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. But before you do, I need to read this portion. And thank you for your participation in tonight's public comments session. This segment is the crucial component of our local government meetings, where each speaker is allotted four minutes. While the city council and I consider all input, the Texas Open Meetings Act mandates that this be a time for us to listen rather than engage in dialogue. Rest assured, our city administrator, Mr. Jones, and city secretary, Ms. Green, are diligently recording notes should any actions be necessary. And Mr. Vasquez, when you're ready, you may begin. Your time will start.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I appreciate you coming out on Saturday and seeing us. It means a lot. I live at 102 Meadow Ridge Drive. I live in the cul-de-sac. I appreciate the drainage that is being taken care of, but I think we're starting at the wrong end. The end that drains and discharges all the drainage for MMR-1 drains right beside my house. That piping that drains into that big ditch is destroyed. So that more water we're pushing down there is going to bottleneck and actually flood all the homes in that cul-de-sac again. Again, I'm not sure if this has been brought up to the third party that is actually doing the drainage, but it's something to keep in mind. I know it's not rainy season now, but if we don't address the issue right, it is going to be raining, it's going to be rainy season, and we are going to have an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Next, I have Ms. Salmons. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tara Salmons, 258 Vista Drive, Venus, Texas. I have some papers. If y'all want to see a copy of it, otherwise, I'll just kind of read what I have, and then if you need one, then I can pass it out to you. I'm here as the president of the Chamber of Commerce. It's been brought to my attention several false allegations that are being said about the chamber, and I want to address those immediately. Number one, the flower crawl. The chamber did not request any money from the 4B. A citizen did. The chamber, this will be hosted at a chamber event. Volunteers from the chamber are helping participate at this event to support the small businesses in our community. Number two, it was stated today by a councilman's spouse that the money from Angel Tree was pocketed. While she did not say my name directly, it was insinuated that I did not turn over the money. While most of the proceeds were ran through rec desk, the cash that was brought in was handed over the next business day directly to the city. I have a copy of this. If anybody would like to see, the memo from the interim chief, who was in attendance that night thanking me for my donation, and I would like to read that. It says, "To the interim city administrator, James Groom from interim chief Jason Gordon, subject commendation, Ms. Tara Salmons. As per our discussion, James, I'm writing this missive to recognize Tara Salmons on a job well done. From what I understand, Ms. Salmons spearheaded the charity event this year that brought in a large sum of monies for the 2023 Christmas Angel Tree and Shop With a Cop at Walmart. Not only did the Angel Tree get completely taken care of, but approximately 30 children received over $100 each to shop with at Walmart. We would like to commend Ms. Salmons on a job well done, and we would also like to present her with the Venus Police Department Challenge Coin and Patch. We believe Ms. Salmons' actions speak a lot about her character, and would like to offer thanks for her contributions this year. I'm not a thief, and I don't appreciate my integrity and my character being questioned. Angel Tree is near and dear to my heart, as my husband and I gained guardianship over our nephew when he was three. He came to us with one stuffed animal and one diaper. For anyone to say something like this is disgusting and not becoming of a councilperson's spouse. Anytime the chamber posts something, this person only has negative things to say, and it only causes more division. I would like to dispel any drama, and going forward, I would love to work with you, and if anyone has any issue, I can give you my phone number, my email, however you would like to talk to me. As you can see, our chamber has done amazing things this year, and we only want to grow, and I don't want any issues or any lies being stated again. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Salmons. Mr. Weeks? I'm sorry, Weems. Name and address for the record, please, and when you're ready, you may begin.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Weems. My address is 875 Dublin Drive. That's Richardson, Texas. Zip is 75080. I wanted to, good evening, Council. I just wanted to touch base with you. Again, my name is Chris Weems, and I'm with Arrington Outdoor. It is my understanding that the council will meet an executive session this evening to discuss Arrington Outdoor's proposal to the city of Venus for the erection of a digital message center. We at Arrington Outdoor feel that the erecting of a digital message center would be advantageous to the city of Venus, as it would promote businesses that are either here or will be here shortly. There is a large amount of retail, as well as multiple housing developments coming to the city of Venus, that had historically used outdoor advertising to attract customers. The digital message center will provide a medium to allow these groups, as well as others, to make the public aware that they are there and ready for business. In addition to that, Arrington Outdoor would like to offer up to the city of Venus, an advertising slot on the digital message center at no charge to the city of Venus, to advertise special events that happen throughout the year in the city of Venus. Again, there is no charge to the city of Venus for this opportunity. The city of Venus is on the cusp of major growth, and Arrington Outdoor welcomes the opportunity to increase the city's sales tax revenue by driving customers to the businesses into the city, as well as providing information to travelers and residents of the city concerning upcoming events in the city of Venus. I want to thank you in advance for your time and consideration of this.
Thank you, sir. And looks like the last comment card I have for tonight is Ms. Kerkendall. Address, name and, well, you know the drill. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jessica Kerkendall, 108 Franklin Court, here in Venus. I just wanted to commend the city on partnering with the chamber for this event, this bingo event, because it was a great turnout, and donating a civic center was a blessing for the whole community. I was able to come in for a little bit. I got here 30 minutes late. Obviously, I'm late everywhere I go. But by the time I got here, there were no bingo cards left. There were no seats available. I mean, there was people from all over the community that were able to attend. I saw some council members there. I saw Mayor there. I even saw several staff members there. It was a great event. And so I just wanted to first commend the city for donating, since it is something that did not cost the city any money. It was donating a facility that wasn't being used anyway. So just wanted to commend you on that. And also, I know the BYSA basketball was able to do a fundraiser here, so that helped our community by helping their fundraiser. So then I was told that there was a few council members that took issue with the event, whether that be that the city donated or the event itself. When I heard this, I heard it from a couple of different people. And when I first heard it, I thought, well, that can't be right. There's got to be a miscommunication somewhere. Obviously, somebody doesn't have all the facts. There's, there's no way the same people that I served with on this council are saying that the city should not do their part or do what they can to host an event when I know that the people on this council that I served with sat in meetings with me and all agreed that we wanted to help build this community, that we wanted to host better events for the, for the town that didn't cost money, events that would bring people out of their homes and get them communicating with people, you know, build a cohesiveness. So I knew that had to be wrong. So I just wanted to, if that is true, if that is the case, and that did happen, I just wanted to, to reflect on what this council really wants for this town and for this community. Do we really want to be at war with the Chamber of Commerce all the time? Do we really want to say, no, the city should not be contributing to a free event for the community? Do we really want to be those people? I know when I started on council, I definitely did not want to be the people, and I don't want to believe that you want to be those people either. I also want to forward some words of advice that were told to me a few times whenever I needed to be reminded, that the city council members are a legislative board, not an executive. You are there to make legislation happen, not to run the day-to-day. So if the city or the city administrator agrees to donate or contribute in some type of way, you know, as I was told as a council member when I served, that's not my business. Y'all are a legislative board, not executive board. And that's all I wanted to say. And I really hope that y'all can move forward. And I know we all discussed building a better relationship with not only the Chamber of Commerce, but also the school district. So I just hope that we can all stop and just work together and bring more of these types of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerkendall. With no other citizen comments, we'll move on to Section Four, the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda have been previously discussed, require little or no deliberation or routine by the council. Discussion and desire that an item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Otherwise, approval of the Consent Agenda authorizes the city administrator, Mr. Jones, to implement each item in accordance with staff's recommendation. There's a handful on here, so just bear with me. 4.1, consider approval of the 2024 Annual Service Plan Update to Service and Assessment Plan for Brahman Ranch Public Improvement District Number One. 4.2, consider approval for the 2024 Annual Service Plan Update to Service and Assessment Plan for Blue Stem Hills Public Improvement District Number One. 4.3, consider approval for the 2024 Annual Service Plan Update to the Service and Assessment Plan for Patriot Estates Public Improvement District. 4.4, approval of meetings, minutes for the city council regular meeting on August 12, 2024. 4.5, ratifying the bills for the month of July 2024. 4.6, consider approval of the annual renewal of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Venus Police Department and the Venus IST Police Department. 4.7, consider approval of the annual renewal of interlocal agreement between Johnson County and the city of Venus for police dispatching services. 4.8, consider approval of the annual renewal of interlocal agreement with Johnson County Radio Agreement. 4.9, consider approval of the annual renewal of the interlocal agreement between Johnson County and the city of Venus for Class C prisoner housing. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Moving on to Section Five, the Budget Workshop. Discuss proposed budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and staff, and residents, and people who showed up this evening. Appreciate you guys. I first want to just say I appreciate the council's graciousness and patience as we kind of get this ball rolling on the new way of kind of doing a few things. I have expressed, I think, in, you know, prior meetings and communications, just how difficult, at least it's been for me. Doesn't mean it's difficult for everybody, but at least for me, it's been difficult based off of historical practices within the city to gather data, mainly on the historical numbers. We have been consistently inconsistent in how we account for a few things. And Becky, our finance director, is finding these almost every day. You turn over one rock, and you know, you just find something else. As I was going through budget updates and more preparation, it did seem like I would get things arranged and, you know, and go back to either through the auditor's notes or previous documentation for budgets, turn over a rock, and then have to backtrack and undo stuff and redo it. That happened time and time and time again. So as I mentioned in the communication with you guys over the weekend via email, when we do actually have the final version, those historical numbers will be accurate and will be in there. It's important to me, as a matter of practice, one of the things I've been telling the mayor and staff members and some other councils, this is kind of really tough work right now that we're having to do in order to make next year that much easier. We have referenced strategic planning that we will be doing starting this fall that will also assist in making the process easier. If you remember a few meetings ago, I had asked you guys to, basically like a priority list, a real kind of quick and dirty priority list. It's something we will formally do in the strategic planning meetings, but it was try to get a, as quick as we could, try to give me a sense of really what y'all wanted to see in the budget. So what we're doing in terms of this budget, which started with the initial proposal and now with this update, is trying to hit as many of those, check as many of those boxes as possible without the formality of having a strategic plan in place, right? So you add that to, you know, new staff in key positions, myself, Becky, Kyle, coming in right in the middle of budget. It's, it's pretty, you know, everybody's having to get up to speed as fast as possible. So it is, I am fairly sure that it's, it's not unroutine that you have to have budget amendments, you know, during the year, certainly to clean stuff up, like a lot of finance directors like to do. But we will most assuredly have budget amendments this coming year because we're in a, not a, not a point of flux, but as you saw within the budget itself, because of the growth that we've been experiencing, you know, we are proposing a 2% decrease in the property tax rate while also increasing our revenues. That's going to allow us to address some, several concerns and holes and things that are on a priority list that maybe haven't gotten the funding they needed in the past. So we're in a really good position now. Now, on some of our larger capital projects, the water tower, some street renewal, we don't really, and Kyle and I talked about this, I mentioned this at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago, after we, after going through our capital needs, the capital improvement plan we have, it's kind of like if everything went perfectly, this is the stuff that the consultants thought we would need. What it really lacked, however, was really what I would call grading, like in, like school grades, if you will, grading on our current infrastructure, things that we need to work on replacing as well. Many times, and I've talked about this with the EDC Board, everybody likes new and shiny and add the addition of stuff, but we also, and I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know, but we also have responsibility to make sure we're taking care of the stuff that's already here, the streets that are already here, water and sewer that's already here, that sort of thing. And we are really going to need more time to be able to better ascertain some of the things we'll talk about in the budget that we'll be requesting from you guys in terms of funding for some, for some services that I believe is going to be instrumental in our strategic planning going into next year, certainly when it comes to capital projects. But we just need time. We don't have enough, we don't even know where some of our lines are because our mapping is just all over the place. We don't have, and I mentioned this last time, and I, I can feel myself getting warm right now because it sounds like excuses, but it's very frustrating when you're trying to get something up to standard, as I mentioned last time, but also is it so technical that you have to have a PhD to read it, right? Because some of these things can be kind of complicated. And, and I feel like it's mine and the staff's job to make them as understandable as possible, so anybody who picks up this document can understand it and read it, right? Not that those professionals like us who do it every day, but anybody, you know, you know, and especially like those of us, myself, Kyle, Becky, that are coming in and new to the entire community, we are finding things that we have just never seen before. That doesn't necessarily mean they're incorrect. They're just odd. And when you're used to seeing something done a certain way for so many years, and you come to a place that does it differently, it kind of, okay, well, how am I going to incorporate this what I already know? So that's been a lot of, you know, it's been a labor of love in this budget. And so hopefully, like I mentioned in the email to you guys over the weekend, this is, oh, actually, not hopefully, but this is much more closer, this is much closer to what I like to present. There's still some holes in here in terms of some of the formatting, some of the information I feel like we need to share. But the numbers are, you know, we talked about in the, I talked about in the email, are what's important, going into next year, where we're at this year, and what we plan on next year. The other stuff is probably more my OCD and wanting to make sure all the information is there so people can have a sense of where we've been, to know how we've gotten where we are. But, you know, a lot of times, you know, the five-year historical look back, that is even skewed because that 2021 year is COVID year. And so so many things changed that year. It's, it's kind of a fool's errand really to try to compare those things because it's almost apples to oranges in a lot of ways. But we're getting there, and I feel like this budget is very, very strong. So I've already mentioned the tax, property tax, recommended decrease of two cents. I've included a little bit more on the property tax analysis than in the last, the last draft. And I mentioned the narrative, which is in this called the Administrator's Letter, what kind of goes into the, how we arrived at the numbers, right? Where we've been in this, in the last few years, what sales tax is doing, what are, who our top sales tax contributors are, how our sales tax receipts keep going up year to year. That's, that's a good thing, right? And then finally, some of the, some of the major additions to this budget in some of the, that going to explain some of the larger increases. Now, what you will see, if you haven't already noticed, is as you go through the departmental budgets, and I mentioned this last time, we have the proposed budget column, which is the highlighted one, right? That's the one we're really talking about in terms of going forward. Then you have the projected finals of this current year that ends in September 30th, and then the unaudited 2023. That is another thing that is making this very difficult, being behind on the audit. We're almost there. They have already started that field work. So I'm hoping the tentative timeline is around the end of October, November, for the 2023 audit, to then very soon start on this fiscal year, and then we'll be caught up. And that's going to make a world of difference in having accurate numbers that we can then use to, for our trending and analysis and projecting that we, that we do budget for budget. But what you will see is these fairly large percentage increases, but just keep in mind that those are a comparison to where we are now in, to this current year and where I think we're going to end. If you, and I may, I think I mentioned this last time, I know I do with the EDC Board, I was really torn between having the comparison between this year projected end and what last year's unaudited was, because a lot of, a lot of the large increases in percentages isn't that much different from what we ended up last year, at least in terms of our unaudited, unaudited numbers. A lot of the increases you're going to see in the budget this year is because, especially when it comes to personnel, we've had a lot of vacancies for a big chunk of the year. And so, as you might imagine, those numbers, the hard numbers are going to be lower than what they would have normally been had those positions been filled the entire year. So when we budget, we budget for those positions, fully funded for the entire year, so you see a dramatic increase in some of those lines. So it's not additional spending. It's spending that we would have if we were to have those people in those positions all year. Now, I'm just going to hit on some of the major, kind of larger increases and some of the new and expanded that I ended up proposing in the second draft, and then we can talk about the ones that I haven't quite made it in there yet. Did anybody have any questions up until now on the, kind of the overall, the numbers in the, in the narrative, any type of information or the overall global budget? It's on the first few pages.
I don't have any questions right now, but maybe you'll answer some of the questions that I do have, so I'll, I'll be patient.
I hope so. And I do, I do want to mention for any staff that are listening or maybe watching, I did not have a chance to update the org chart. So there's some people missing, or positions rather, that are missing. That does not mean your position's getting funded. I just have a chance to, we're doing some reorganization, and I have a chance to finalize that, so we will fix that. I got an email about that today, and I was like, yeah, I could probably see that. People start squirming about that. Now, we'll say on page eight, which is the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures Five-Year Comparison, we are projecting, based on the updated numbers, this is probably the most balanced budget I think I've ever been a part of in terms of the numbers. Budgets are typically balanced using fund balance, right? So, and that's a legitimate use of, of fund balances, you know, to balance with your expenditures. After we made the changes and made some of the changes that are relative to the revenues, this almost came out one to one. So we're, so I'm not projecting us using hardly any of our fund balance as it stands right now. Now, what that's done has also made me kind of rethink some of the additions, and we might want to add a few things, given that the strength of our fund balance, because I'm projecting us to end the year at 40%, which is, our fund balance policy is 25% for the general fund, so we're well above that. And that's the type of things that you can use for these one-time expenditures, capital expenditures, and projects and stuff like that. You wouldn't normally use reserves for operating expenses, like if you're going to give a big raise across the board, right? You wouldn't necessarily do that, you would want to do that out of growth. You wouldn't want to do that out of general fund reserves because you'd eventually run out of money, right? So, but projects, capital, your large equipment, capital projects, one-time expenses, those are the types of things you're going to want to use fund balance for typically. But we're well over and very comfortable when it comes to our fund balance policy. And again, a fund balance policy just sets aside 90 days or a quarter of the fiscal year when it comes to expenditures to make sure that every single revenue stream dried up, we would, you know, be able to basically to pay the bills for at least a quarter of the year. So that's, that's what that's for. There's also a, a really, there's a sweet spot when it comes to minimum, the fund balance policy in terms of 25%. spot when it comes to minimum, the fund balance policy in terms of 25%. And then there's really no, there's really no maximum in terms of above that, but you can get in trouble when it comes to your credit rating and some of the other things that the state looks at. But if your fund balance cushion, anything over above your fund balance policy is too large. And so we'll, we'll need to start using some of that. And of course, a big chunk of that is the growth that's hit this year. We talked about the last time, the increases in our property tax revenue. So a lot of that fund balance increases due to the growth just from this year. So it's nothing that this council or staff has not done correctly in the past. We've just got to, we've just got to jolt, kind of a shot in the arm that we've, we've really needed. And we're gonna, it's going to come in really handy, obviously.
Josh, does, does that have anything to do with like when we're talking about a 90-day reserve or 120? Are we talking about the same thing? Okay, I want to make sure my understanding was correct. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, exactly. All right. Anybody have any questions? So page nine is revenues. The only thing that's really changed there is, and I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit when it comes to revenue offsets. So we're able to squeeze in one of the, one of the things, admittedly, it didn't get a whole lot of consensus direction from the council last time, but there were some ideas, you know, individuals have shared that I've tried to incorporate. One of those things was, you know, additional firefighters, and I know we want to see our fire department grow. That's one of the things chief has requested. So we, we were able to fit in three new firefighters here, and all the departments' heads are here if you want to ask specific, more technical questions for them. But that's really to get every, every engine or every shift with the three-man crew. Is that right, chief? We want to get an additional person on there to have three on at one time, which is really your kind of your base minimum complement. The, the, the good thing about that, or one of the good things about that is not just increasing coverage for having more personnel, but the ESD actually provides a lot of offsets for that in the first couple of years, kind of like a safer grant. So we're looking at about, and I don't have a specific number in front of me. Actually, I think I do. So while we added three new firefighters in these fire departments budget, which will, so you'll see that increase, the ESD offsets that to a little bit over $48,000 per new person. So in the revenue sheet, you're going to see that increase there that's going to offset the majority of those additions. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
Chief Allen? Sorry, Josh.
No, no problem.
With us, with us increasing staffing, it's across all shifts to three?
It'll add one personnel to each shift.
Okay. Is that doing anything for ISO rating or not yet?
Uh, it, every personnel helps. Our main issue is like when we get, we get dispatched to a medical call. Normally, medical calls take two personnel, but usually when we're, about 30% of the time when we're on that call, we'll get a secondary medical call. Well, the crews are tied up. This will give us one person still at the station that can, they can run the second medical call, and we can stop asking for mutually as much.
Okay.
Plus, two personnel on a fire, it's hard when the captain is doing what they need to do, and the engineer is setting up everything to fight the fire. A third person pulling hose and carrying tools, you need at least four minimum on an engine, but three is way better than two. You can get twice as much work done in the first 10 minutes.
The goal for us, at least, at least four per shift is what we want eventually, right? Okay.
And it'll, it'll cut out some of the overtime, too, because I'll be able to send the person, one personnel to training without having to pay overtime to cover it with the two-man minimum.
Okay. All right. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Yes, no problem.
What about, I'm sorry.
Chief Allen, how do our volunteers supplement into that staffing? Do we, do you have them like scheduled where we've got like one-off volunteer or two volunteers each shift? Or do you fill in as needed? How does, how does that help with your staffing?
Currently, we have six volunteers. I believe three are commissioned firefighters that are certified to fight. The rest of them don't have their TCFP commission, but they still have state firemen commissions, which are equivalent. We use the volunteers to help offset. If someone takes a day off, they check with the volunteers to see if a volunteer can cover their shift that they need to take off. Everybody's invited to come up and work any shift. We pay them a stop-in in intervals of eight hours, 12 hours, or 24 hours. And the ESD funds that money that we pay back to the part, the volunteers to offset our costs to have them coming up to the station. They don't have a set schedule. Every Tuesday night, most of the volunteers show up, they do training, some come up early and stay for an eight or 12-hour shift to help supplement the staffing on the trucks. But no one is set scheduled to be there at a certain time. But like I said, they do backfill on vacation times, day off requests, stuff like that, which helps reduce our overtime cost. Yes, sir, no problem.
Okay. I don't have anything else, chief. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, Josh. Go ahead.
No, no problem. And I will just finish on that, that revenue side. As a matter of fact, we didn't have our, another part of the delay is getting information timely enough. And I appreciate the chief went to the ESD Thursday night, last Thursday night. And so I was, we were exchanging text messages and emails right after that, because we got our final contract number and the final incentive numbers I was able to plug in Friday morning. So that's, that's another one of the change. Our annual contract went up a little bit, and then the incentive parts for the additional personnel. Any, any questions on the revenue page? Okay, page 10 is just the, I'm big on classifications and categories. I like seeing those things. And I feel like it gives people a better, a really good idea of what exactly how, how the city's structured and where the funds go. And obviously, we get into more detail in the following pages. The changes, I'm just going to focus on the changes that were, were made from the last draft, and then certainly we can talk about any items you wish. When it comes to administration, this is one of the things that I've mentioned, I've mentioned before, I think as a group, but also individually. At one point, the administrative staff, city administrator, city secretary, finance director, HR director, were in administration, and that's typically how you see that. At some point, it started, previous city finance directors or managers started separating out people into their own departments. I don't, I don't know why, to me, financially, that's a nightmare. I can't imagine why somebody would want to separate everybody out like that. But also, these positions overlap funds because obviously I am administering all the funds, so my, my wages are split amongst those funds. A lot, we have, we have several positions that take care of administrative things for the water and sewer fund, the EDC, and the city or general fund side. And so our, our personnel costs are spread out over those. So you can imagine, you spread those out over two or three funds, and you split them up individually. It's, it's, it just creates way more work, and it's completely unnecessary. So I've consolidated those again. We've had, we had a bunch of departments of one, is what I call them, one-person departments. And while we might have offices, city administrator's office, city secretary's office, that you, as we grow, there might be people added to it, having one person in an entire department and segregating that stuff out doesn't make any sense. And Becky, you know, we've gone over and about this, we thought this is the most efficient way to do it. And certainly in the administrative thing, anytime you guys want to see specific items, we're going to be able to provide that for you. But it's just much easier accounting-wise, and it's certainly much easier budgeting-wise to have things consolidated like this. But on the administrative side, the additions we had is, one of the things is, this is kind of, this is over two funds, is the updated classification and compensation study that I would like us to do. It's my understanding that the city did this a couple of years ago. And we have talked about doing kind of more informal surveys along the way. But just as a matter of experience, my last community we served in, we also did a formal class and comp study in 2022, and we were already having to redo it this year. So these are those types of things, because of the way the market is reacting and the way wages, again, COVID just kind of changed a lot of things. And certainly with a lot, way a lot of people think about employment, right? Things are changing. People are demanding more, and they're getting it, right? And people are a lot more mobile. And then you have telecommuting, and you have all these things. So I feel like it's for the best for us as a community to have a more formal comp and class study done from a third party that's going to give us some more objective, I feel like, data that we can then use to support whatever type of salary system that we want to put in place. We may find that we're just fine when it comes to comparable cities in the market in some positions, and we may find we're way behind, and we may find that we're ahead. We just kind of don't really know right now where we're at. We can certainly call, you know, we can have certain department heads or even the HR director look and kind of call their, maybe do an informal survey with their peers. But when you start talking about actual comp cities, not the ones we think are comp cities, but actual comp cities, I kind of mentioned this last time, very in a clunky way, but, you know, certain positions may be different, but their titles might be the same. So you have to look at what they're actually doing. So that's going to really matter in terms of job duties and job descriptions rather than titles. So those are the types of things that these types of studies get into. They also get into and work on avoiding or trying to mitigate salary compression, right? So when you have new people come on, and like we've seen, I've seen this in my last three communities, because of COVID, you have new people, let's just say, for, for conversation's sake, somebody's making $25 an hour. And then two or three years later, you hire somebody in at that very same position, but now they're not willing to work for $25 an hour. You're having to do it at 2760, or, you know, something like that. Well, then when it's happening, the person that started two years ago is like, hey, what about me? You know, I want 2760 now. So class and comp studies effectively mitigate too much of that. And when you update that effectively enough, you can keep it from happening. Another part of that is, is the, the, the step program that the city adopted a few years ago that essentially acts as an automatic COLA. Okay, this is one of, one of the things that we talked about last time, needing some direction from you guys on. So that, whether that's how it's meant to be, that's how it's been viewed. I think that's how it's kind of been used, is kind of an automatic COLA. But essentially, it's every employee's anniversary, on their anniversary, they get a 3% bump to their current salary. But it's also a very good way to make sure people are rising, you know, hopefully in line with the market when it comes to salaries, and we don't start falling behind. The addition of a, so the clamp and comp and class study, we are estimating to be around 30,000 to 35,000, and that will be split over two funds. Now, obviously, it's going to be everything I can do to make sure I try to get service lower than that, but that's around, that's about the going rate for these things. Okay? But that'll be split over two funds. And then the other major addition to administration is also a request to go, to move and change our accounting system. So the, whether for better or for worse, the kind of, I call it the Microsoft of governmental accounting is ENCODE, taller technologies. They've been the thing for years. But ironically, they're also the most, I feel like they're the most user unfriendly. It's very clunky. You can't really do a lot of, maybe it's more like Apple. You can't do a whole lot of customization to it. Or Google, you kind of can, you know, that's the kind of the main thing. But I have, I've had very good success in my previous communities that I've done this with, going from ENCODE to a service called FunView, okay? And it's FAST, the, the fund accounting systems technologies. Ironically, they, the founders of FAST are, used to be ENCODE employees. So they have taken a lot of that stuff from customers and made it more, I think, user-friendly, more nimble. It's also cloud-based. It's not server-based. It's not based like, and obviously, they host it. But anybody that has access, that's given access, can access the budget from anywhere. Right now, we have a situation where Fire or Public Works can't get into ENCODE very easily because we're on different servers and different, you know, different sites. Well, if we have a, a cloud-based platform, that, that goes away. People can get up-to-date financials just like that. They don't have to email and bother Becky, hey, can you send me my, my financials? They can get on there and get it themselves. It also makes budgeting, the budgeting module, and some of the other things way easier. We are in the midst of kind of a no man's land in which we're going to have to make a decision because ENCODE, we are on ENCODE nine right now, and they have, at least for about two and a half years, have been trying to get everybody to migrate over to ENCODE 10. Two communities ago, where I was in Converse, we used both. My last community, we had to use both. Here, we just use nine. We probably should be using both. But as you can, as you can imagine, if ENCODE nine isn't that great, and you're having to go back and forth between two softwares, it's, it's a nightmare. So we are requesting to move over to that software. That's, the implementation, as you might imagine, first year is the most expensive. But we're in a no, we're going to make a decision sooner rather than later. So we can either wait and try to get on ENCODE 10, which is about a $70,000 migration cost, but it's also an 18-month waitlist. In the meantime, they are slowly stopping, they're, they're slowly, they're rolling back or rolling, kind of, I don't know, rolling back their, their maintenance of ENCODE nine. So they're stopped, they kind of slowly don't fix stuff, right? And of course, the cynic would say, well, they're trying to get you, they're trying to force you to go to ENCODE 10. And that's kind of what they do. You know, they start, they start maintaining and servicing certain versions so they get you to go to the new one. FAST, when they update theirs, it's just much more turnkey, and they don't charge you for every time they, they update their, the software. So that's, that's nice. But that first year cost is going to be about $64,000. That's, that will also be split amongst the funds. And then after that, it's about half of that going forward, which is about what we pay now for, for ENCODE. That's the, yes, sir.
So going to the new system is actually cheaper than trying to
In the long run, it is cheaper.
transition over to the new. Okay.
Yeah.
Got you. Thank you.
It'll be about the same cost on the transition, but going forward, we'll save more money on FunView. Okay, the next page, permits and inspections. Didn't have any, any material changes there except for on the, I don't believe this actually changed from the, from the last draft, but really the only change there, other than personnel changes, line items, is that that department took over the EDC's fleet maintenance cost. So that's, that's the only change materially in there. Most everything else is in line with just increased costs for supplies and whatnot. Not, there aren't any material changes in planning and development. Police Department, we, I think I mentioned this in the very first budget meeting, Chief Groom did not have many requests for new and expanded, and I appreciate that because it's pretty rare that police chiefs don't have that many. But he did have some biggies, right? And one of the main ones, it was very difficult to decide which is, was a 5% salary increase across the board for officers and sergeants. Chief had done, you know, a fairly good job at getting some information to back up that data, and it's very convincing. I think that if we're going to do something like that, it needs to either be across the entire board, right? Or we need to, utilizing the class and comp study that we're going to be doing, utilize that data to inform what we do salary-wise. If you, I, I just think you've got to, you can't really do both, right? So I didn't place the 5% increase across the board in there. I placed the comp study in there instead, so that depending on what the comp study shows, we can then adjust going forward, maybe at mid-year, depending on when we're able to get it done. If the class and comp is something the council is amenable to, that's something we would get started with, you know, almost immediately after fiscal year starts. So we're, you know, it can be prepared and ready for many mid-year adjustments should the council decide to do that.
Josh, quick question.
Yeah.
Tony, maybe you can answer this for me, I'm not sure, but didn't we do a salary survey two years ago? Was that by chance? Do you remember off the top of your head?
What'd you say?
Salary survey two years ago.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So are you saying, I just want to clarify, are you saying a new one is needed, or are we just, are you saying a new one is needed?
Right, yeah, it needs to be updated.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Because I don't, I'm not sure how much the cost went over that, how well it went over last.
Well, and there, what's happening, there are some new tools that are popping up, you know, they always say the, you know, invention, necessity is the mother of invention, right? There are news that are, there are new tools that are popping up almost daily. One of my peers has a side hustle called city compensation, that basically I think is going to end up taking the place of these comp and class studies. It is so comprehensive, except that it stops at kind of the director level and up. They haven't got far enough to some of our, the mid-level stuff. But that, I think it's going to be a cost-effective way. I mean, you can pay $5,000 for the report, or $30,000 for a full-blown consultant. So I think as we go, as we go forward and newer tools are available to us, we'll be able to do this on almost like a annual basis and it not be such a hit. And we can make, we can make sure we're, you know, keeping up with the market. The other, the other request that did get added in, I don't know if, if chief has talked about this in the past, but a, a recruiting incentive by paying for somebody's academy, right? So I have, I have added a slot there for academy, in the training. You'll, you'll see the training having gone up. You know, we're looking at ending the year about 9,000, and we're, we're jacking that up to 16 to have some more slots there to try to encourage some, some candidates and do, do better at recruitment.
A question about that, Chief Groom? A question about that, Chief Groom. Are we, how are we ensuring that they stay with Venus? Are we having them do like a year commitment, two-year commitment, or if we're paying for their academy, right? Or did I hear that wrong, just to make sure?
Yeah, it's pretty standard to ask for a two-year commitment. Now, I mean, in all fairness, you know, a lot of times, those are worth the pieces of paper they're written on, so you know, you're looking for people that want to be here and want to stay with us, so you know. I don't want anybody thinking that we're going to get them in there, never going to leave, and it's all going to be fine. So I just want to put that, point that out before we get started, because unfortunately, it does happen sometimes.
Yeah, no, that's good. I just want to make, I just wasn't sure what commitment we're asking for, so that's good, yeah. I just didn't, I don't, I don't ever want us to turn into a stepping stone department, you know what I mean? I know it happens in a lot of departments, but I don't want us to go that, I don't want us to be that way, you know, overall, so.
Yeah, we've, we've been pretty fortunate to hold on to a lot of people for a long time, and I'd like to continue doing that for sure.
Yes, okay, cool. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Yeah, and I totally recognize that waiting on the class and comp to do any salary adjustments, I could, I could look like a genius, right? And, or I could like, well, we could have, should have done it anyway, because that's what the numbers show. But I would rather go with data that I know, you know, coming from a third party, I have to look at a little bit more objective, right? We can certainly, in the interims, like every other year, do our own, but I think as we get more staff and as we ramp up the efficiencies internally, we'll be able to do that much quicker than we're able to do that now. We just don't have, we just don't have the people to do it. That was really the only change, other than the, the, and I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, I think I kind of blew past it a little bit. This addition, the additions do include the 2% COLA that Mr. Bonavent had brought up last time, just to see if it would work, and it works fine. So the wages, the salary and wage lines include the 3% STEP, that's automatic on everybody's anniversary day, and then the 2% COLA that would be effective on October 1st for everyone. Everybody understand? So it's essentially a 5% increase. It's not 5% the entire year, because as you might imagine, people start at different times of the year. Somebody might get their STEP in October, you know, and somebody may get it in August, right? So that's another thing that makes this, the STEP program a little bit odd, because as we go in to try to budget for people's salaries for the entire year, we have to try to go back, or we started to try to go back and prorate every single employee based on how much they exactly would do, you know, have for the entire year, and it's just, it's entirely too cumbersome to do that. So this just is a, the numbers themselves will likely not be this high, because this accounts for, again, fully staffed, fully funded for the entire year, okay? On the next page, code compliance, that also was under Chief Groom, and there's just requests for a replacement code enforcement vehicle, and so that has been included there as well. And that, that shows up on the vehicle lease payments near the bottom, the very bottom on the right-hand corner, that's where that number is, that's where that comes from.
On that, is Chief, is that a sworn position or a non-sworn position? I can't remember. Non-sworn, okay, thank you.
Okay, as we go forward, court, no changes there, it's probably the easiest budget to do. That's mainly just software, ticket riders, that sort of thing, and supplies and maintenance for, you know, processing citations and getting court done and that sort of thing. So pretty, very minimal there in terms of any changes. The next page, FIRE, we've already mentioned a little bit on the changes there. This is a significant increase in the budget, but whenever you have, you know, anywhere from 50 to 70% of your departmental budget wrapped up in personnel, when you add two, three, four more people, it's going to be a big increase. As you might imagine, or certainly understand, the numbers, social security, Medicare, TMRS, those are all percentages based off of wages, right? So that's very simply, those numbers are very simply the percentages of those line items. Any increase that you see in those line items is a reflection of the increase in the salary line, right? So it has obviously a domino effect, because we have the, you know, our two-to-one match of TMRS. So now, I would say that that actually, our two-to-one match is a 14, it's 14 to 7, right? So employees put in seven, the city matches two-to-one at 14. But this is based on our actual rate we'll be paying, which is only 11%. The way that works is that sometimes when you have new people come on and they don't vest, they're not here long enough to vest with the city, but the city has put in that 14%, they don't get to keep that 14%. So we essentially end up prepaying our liability for TMRS. We kind of, yeah, prepay, so when we get somebody new, our actual 14% may fluctuate depending on how far we prepaid that stuff out. So you actually get credit for that. So our rate is lower than the 14% for the calendar or the fiscal year.
What is our current vesting? Is it five or seven?
Yeah, it's five. It's pretty standard, yeah.
Okay. I don't know why this didn't click in my brain, but why are we paying social security and TMRS?
We didn't opt out of social security when it was allowed.
So our employees pay both?
What's that?
Our employees pay both?
Yeah.
Well, I'm a, well, I'm 20 years to the employee, I only pay in the TMRS because we know social security may not be there when we retire, so TMRS is, that's our thing, you know?
Well, employers, I look at employers, there was a, I can't remember what year it was, I want to say it was the late 80s, you basically had to opt out or opt in as an employer. So this is my fifth community in over 17 years. This is half of, I say half, two of them didn't participate in social security, and the other three did.
Yeah, we don't. We just pay TMRS, that's it. Interesting, okay.
Matter of fact, that was one of my first questions when I was coming here, is we, Lataca didn't do it, and Joshua didn't do it. But Converse, in my first city, they did participate in both. So when it comes to FIRE, we've already mentioned the addition of the personnel. The only other significant increase there is we do have an additional vehicle that's actually kind of in the rears, it's at the outfitters now, but we, it's not going to hit this fiscal year, so it's going to go on fiscal, next fiscal year, and that's what you see at the bottom with the small equipment, that's a, that actually is inaccurate, I need to move that number to a different line, but it shows a significant increase of small equipment, that's for the outfitting of that vehicle. And then the lease, the lease payment at the bottom is for that vehicle, it's a brush truck. It's a new brush truck. So that's the additional personnel, and then that piece of equipment is the changes, the major changes in FIRE. Streets, there was a fairly, you know, talking to Kyle and the staff, making a concerted effort to try to do it even more repair and maintenance, pothole feeling, that sort of thing. And that will require some equipment that I feel like we were going to probably have to talk about mid-year, if not now, that they're going to need to do it. And plus, the personnel to run that equipment. We've got some stuff, the type of equipment I think we need that allows us to get more bang for our buck in terms of personnel, it's one or the other. You either have to have more pieces of smaller equipment for everybody to run, or more people for bigger equipment, you know, so it's kind of a catch-22 in many ways. But the biggest thing when it comes to streets is we're requesting funds for our pavement condition index, what we call PCI. This gets back to the capital improvements planning. We really need, and this is something we would normally be able to do and maintain as in-house year-to-year, but you've got to have something to maintain before you can maintain it. So we really need help for somebody to come in, engineer to come in, help us do the pavement condition index. And what that does is it helps inform our priorities in terms of the capital improvement plan, of what streets we need to hit when. So in essence, you would have a grade essentially from A to F, with F obviously, you know, being in terms of condition, the highest priority, but also there are other factors, including traffic, budgeting, obviously, funding sources, and that sort of thing. So the PCI would get something for us on paper that we could then maintain going forward. And just having it, having it in our hand, well, it's going to make budgeting, the capital improvements fund planning a lot easier as well. That's streets, not many changes, not any significant changes in terms of parks and And then non-departmental, the next page, that is, this is one of those departments that a few years ago, all this stuff was in admin or non-departmental, it just kind of depends on the year sometimes. But this is things that cannot be obviously directed to any one department. We have, you know, we have a few personnel expenses coming out of there, most of it is supplies and materials, just to, you know, to do business. And then the major increase here for the budget is the, for whatever reason, there are vehicles that were in the city administrator's budget, vehicle lease payments and vehicle R&amp;M and gas and oil and stuff that the administrator is not even, they're not even, they're not appointed to that person. So they're more like, kind of, everybody uses them. So again, non-departmental, so I've moved the lease payments for those vehicles from out of the admin or city administrator's office budget to non-departmental, because that's really where it should go, because it's kind of, they're kind of a use-all, catch-all for everybody. Any questions on general fund?
So on that one, there's a departmental special projects, 35,000. What kind of things would fall in that?
Let's see. On that, on non-departmental?
Yeah, page 21, 35,000, about four lines up.
Oh, yeah, 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 I see that. You know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what that is. I don't have that note in front of me, I'll get that answer. It's something, obviously. It's not, definitely not a typo. I remember, I remember entering the number, but.
Would possibly the library fall in that?
Well, that's going to be one of those things. There were some things, like, I've had a really difficult time with the special projects line, because that sounds super shady to me, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I think it's just kind of a catch-all for miscellaneous. But yeah, the contributions, like the, in the, in the old budgets, the city administrators' contributions or donations, I mean, so I just lumped all those in that weren't specific to a department, to that, to the non-departmental.
Okay.
And coincidentally, the school has reached out to, sometime in the future, to try to, I guess, renegotiate the city's contribution to the school. It's been, I think, something like 30 years since it was last brought up. That request came to me while I was in the middle of this, and that's not something I felt comfortable just plugging in here. So that's something we're going to have to, we're definitely going to have to need to talk about, but I've already made a note of that, once we get into, pass this draft, and it's something, talking about, talking about at the next meeting. And it's obviously, it's always something that we could do, you know, at any point during the fiscal year as well.
How much are we currently giving them now?
I want to say $6,000 a year, but I've gotten some different, some different conflicting information on what that is.
I thought it was only a thousand.
So I've heard, I've heard a thousand, I've seen 6,000 written down, depending on where it is in the finances, is also trying to track it down is also another, how we, because it's either putting in the admin donations, or somebody else's special projects and stuff like that, so.
What are they asking for now?
A lot more.
Significantly more?
Yeah, tens of thousands, yeah, it's going to be a really significant increase, yeah. And then maybe very, maybe, you know, something we obviously contemplate, but it's, yeah, it's a lot more.
And this is?
And it would be, it would be stair-stepped, right? So it's kind of like, almost like a safer grant, but in reverse. We would, you know, contribute a little bit more until we got to a certain point. Essentially, they want us to take on more of their personnel cost for the library, and some other, you know, I guess the win-win, what they see as a win-win for the, you know, for the city contributing versus what they need to put in, and what that library essentially provides for the community versus the school. You know, when I was in Joshua, we had a very similar setup. We, but we, when I was in Joshua, we had asked for extended evening hours and extended weekend hours, and so we ponied up to fund that. I think what the sentiment is, is they've, they've increased some of that service, and we haven't increased along the way, and we haven't increased our funding along the way. So essentially, I think it's trying to true-up, if you will.
In Joshua, were those city employees?
What's that?
Were those city employees, or were those?
No, they're school employees.
No, in Joshua?
They were school employees.
School employees, okay. Okay.
So I appreciate you bringing that up, because that'll be something we'll need to talk about.
Okay.
Anything else on general fund? All right, nothing has changed in debt service fund, but what I do plan on adding to the budget is a five-year debt service schedule, so people know where these numbers come from.
Josh, sorry, do you have one more quick question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that. Do we have any information or updates on parks board? Do we know where we're at with that? Are we doing anything with that right now, or are we just?
Well, I've been, I've been struggling with that as well, because there's really, frankly, there's really no need to have a whole nother board. We've got the top B EDC that can do similar top projects, and we've got obviously the Parks and Rec Department that's going to be doing a lot of stuff. My, and I was going to talk about this after the fact, after we got through the budget, but my recommendation is going to be, if we're going to put a literal parks board together, a Parks Advisory Board, something like that, it's going to be very similar to like a library advisory board, or some, you know, putting together a, you know, volunteers or getting, being appointed by the council, and then they would kind of essentially take on what the EDC has kind of done, which is more park-related ideas and projects, but the EDCs could still fund, but a lot of those ideas could come from the Parks Board, right? So they would basically make a consensus recommendation, submit that to staff, we would run the numbers, right, depending on where, when, where we feel like the financing or funding would come from, what type of project it is, and they either take that to the EDC Board for consideration and/or take, bring it to you guys. So that's kind of my, my vision of that. It's not necessarily a literal, we can certainly make a line item and then put a number in there so that, but essentially, those improvements or whatnot are going to come out of those line items that already exist anyway. So unless you would literally want to see a parks, I don't know, we would call it something that's more segregated and definitive, that would be really the only reason to have a separate line item for a parks board, if it's just an advisory body.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yeah, but that, from my, from my point of view, that is more in the strategic planning that we're going to be doing. So the idea there is, I mentioned, and I shared this with the EDC as well, it's going to be like a joint, big joint meeting in here, right? Council, P&amp;Z, EDC, and of course, it's an open meeting just like this, so whoever wants to come. Sometimes, you know, what you typically hear is like a retreat, that sort of thing, budget retreat, strategic planning retreat. But that'll, the Parks Board, that's types of ideas, it's things that we're going to want to, want to formulate and kind of establish in that, and that, the, what comes out, the results of those meetings is going to help me and staff kind of create a more on-paper thing that you can touch and feel and have direction and a map to go by.
I just thought a three-way meeting would be kind of neat, I've never seen, I just thought a three-way meeting would be kind of neat, I've never seen what it was for.
Yeah.
So council, P&amp;Z, EDC.
And I'll bring snacks to keep you guys under control, you know?
He brought, he's going to bring snacks, remember that, it's on the record.
So I'll sit here and make my sad face for a second, but you know, my vision, my vision has always been that within the next, you know, five to 10 years, we have a large park complex in this city, and that we have, within that timeframe, gotten our, you know, local stakeholders involved, the youth sports associations, you know, I'd like to see them have a space to be able to practice, and so, you know, we can't get it this year, we can't get it this year, and if that's your recommendation, then that's, thank you. But I mean, at some point, that'll kind of be into the strategic planning conversation, I guess.
Don't go pouting yet, Tony, like, we're going to get this done. And I really do think this, this year, not going to be tumultuous, but financially, I think we are going to be coming back mid-year, around mid-year to make some significant changes. Some of the things that maybe we can't quite, not agree on, but kind of ride that, because we need to have that strategic planning in place. Once we get that, things are, I think you'll see, things are going to start moving a lot quicker.
Is the, is it TERS, is the TERS in here at all?
No, no, I don't, I don't put this in the operating budget.
Okay.
Yeah. Those, but the funds coming from the TERS are incorporated into the property tax revenue, and then we use that for that specific location, you know, that specific area. But it's not an operating fund, so if it's not an operating fund, I don't put them in the operating fund budget.
Okay.
It's part of the operating budget.
All right, thank you.
Okay, no changes on debt service, but like I mentioned a little bit ago, I do plan on putting in, or will be putting in, a five-year debt service schedule in there, so people know where those numbers come from, okay? And what it's paying for, that's a big part of it as well. And then you'll see the EDC budget, this budget was presented to the EDC, and which was passed at their last meeting. Some significant changes, and I think probably some of the most exciting is, it's like I told the EDC at their meeting, this is just a start, it's kind of seed money to kind of get us going in the direction of real true economic development. I sent out an email today, I don't know if the council saw this, I copied you guys on it as well, but trying to give kind of a primer to the EDC. You know, we've talked about, uh, doing some more, uh, formal training, and I think that's always good for anybody, but any legislative body or policy body like the EDC, um, for anybody, even if you've been in it. Every so often, it's good to get a pressure, but specifically for our EDC Board and as new, as such new members, I feel like we need to get somebody in here. I can certainly do it, um, but I, I have, you know, I've got peers and people I've worked with before that can come in and, you know, can make it very, very easy, um, in getting people up to speed on what projects are eligible, what probably aren't eligible, you know, how we have to go about doing things, you know, formally with the statutes, and there's lots of, there's lots of if, thens, when it comes to EDC, if you're this size and you can do that, but then this happens, you do this. And if you're on the Gulf Coast, then you can do that. So it's, it can get kinda complicated. So when people start saying, well, can we do this, this, and this, I'll say, well, it kinda depends. It depends on the details, right? But one of the things that we've included in here, um, we don't, we're not showing any, although we budgeted, uh, quite a bit, almost $200,000 for park improvements, we're not, we haven't done much this year to show that, so we're putting that back in the budget. I've already talked to Kyle, and we are going to make, be making some serious improvements, uh, with those funds going this next year. The other thing that I'm really excited about is, uh, if you'll see there toward the bottom is economic development incentives. Um, we don't currently have a citywide policy when it comes to incentives, a formal policy, and that is both, it has pros and cons to it. But what that $50,000 is, what the, my intent of it is, is a, um, kind of a beautification grant program for our existing businesses. What I would like to do is establish via these funds, a program that allow them to, um, up to a certain amount, and the, and the, the board will decide what that amount is, and obviously you guys will ratify those decisions, allowing people to make improvements to the facade of their businesses and then request reimbursement from the EDC to offset those costs. Um, it's one of the tried and true programs of economic development, and it's a big, uh, I think it's a big step towards the what about us, things that come from our existing businesses. You know, we all like the new and shiny stuff, but business retention, uh, is a big, big part of economic development. So this is just a little, kinda like, say, seed money in getting something started. And I, I fully expect for that to grow and that to be parlayed into bigger projects and bigger programs. So it's really exciting, and it's just a start. You know, there's a lot more we could've done, but again, once the strategic planning is in place, which the EDC is gonna be a part of, you're gonna start seeing those numbers change quite a bit.
Do you have any questions on this part of the budget?
I think he answered my question there, cause I had that question about that big 180K, and I'm like, what? I do know that there's a lot that needs to be done, but that's a big chunk. So I'm sure you've got some kind of plan proposal to put together, so we know what makes up that 180, though.
Right, we will, absolutely.
Okay. Before we continue on you further, I'm gonna recess for five minutes for, break for everyone. At, uh, recess is at 7:41 PM.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, like I was saying, he's just powered through, only have a few minutes left, but hopefully, hopefully, if I talk fast enough, right? Um, okay, so again, uh, debt service will be updated, uh, with the, with the, uh, five-year, um, debt service schedule, so everybody knows where those numbers are coming from. The following couple pages are just our, our small, uh, special revenue funds, court security, court technology, which are pretty standard, really, really low numbers, or minimal numbers. The main one there is our street maintenance tax fund, right? Uh, which we use to subsidize our, our street, uh, existing street maintenance. Um, and again, after, you know, Kyle coming on board, we're gonna make a concerted effort to do way more of that. Now, that's gonna be predicated upon, you know, having enough staff, uh, even, even our, the ones we already have budgeted, making sure those are filled, we have enough materials and plots, supplies, uh, and, and the equipment to be able to do it. Uh, or we, you know, bring in a third party to do some of it, like we do, we tend to do sometimes if we don't have the equipment to do it. Any question on those special revenue funds? Pretty, pretty minimal. All right, water and sewer, um, this is probably one, one of the ones I, it, you'll notice, uh, proprietary funds, enterprise funds, they're just accounted for a little bit differently than governmental funds. It's a lot more pared down, there aren't as many things that you have to cover when you're doing this reporting. Um, but pretty standard on the, uh, revenues. Uh, we're looking at a probably about a 3% increase on both sewer and water cells. That's what we're kinda seeing in the trend. Um, and then when it comes to our, our, our costs, we're anticipating, you know, just those pass-throughs, you know, so we'll, we'll have to account for those. Um, really, no, not a whole lot of change in revenues, about a 5% increase there. Uh, moving forward very quickly, uh, you'll see the next page again, there was a, oh...
Wait, Tony, yes.
Yes, sir.
This is open for him.
Um, Josh, last year, we had a pretty extensive conversation about this, uh, when we were talking about water and sewer rates and, you know, have we, have we taken into account that our contract with Midlothian increases every year? And then also, I think it is next year, the 2025, 2026, there's like a substantial increase in...
I believe that's correct, yeah. I don't have the percentage in front of me, but I believe that's correct. But, well, coincidentally, one of the other things, and I, that's something that they were gonna have to, um, Kyle and I, you know, I don't wanna speak for him, but during our conversations, we were, you know, we, we also believe we're at some point gonna need a rate study. Um, rate studies help not only with, uh, maintaining, everything is tied together like we've talked about. The comp plan, we're gonna need the rate study to know that the rates that, not just the rates we're charging today, but the rates we may need to charge in the future are gonna be suffi, are gonna be sufficient to fund the improvements we're gonna need. If you, if you wait to do all that until when you need it, then the rate, the rate increases are 2, 3, 400%, you're just never, it's never gonna happen. So, uh, the rate study is one of those things that, again, goes into the PCI study, that goes into the comp plan, that goes into the CIP, they're just all tied together. So, um, getting those contract, and those, how those contracts, uh, act as well, that's gonna have an impact on, on those races as well. So it's getting all those things lined up and just having the, having the time to do it.
One of the contentious issues about the rate and, the water and sewer rate study that we had done, what, November, Ms. Kirkendall? Yeah, I think it was November was our last one.
Yeah, they started one.
Yeah, and one of the issues was, is that like we were being compared to like Rusk. Well, Rusk is not even in the same water district as we are, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one of the issues that we, that we kinda pointed out at that time when we were discussing that is, well, uh, we understand, you know, that we shouldn't be compared to Grand Prairie, but at the same time, we do need data from somebody that's also in the TRA or, you know, Trinity River Authority or the, you know, those, those entities, so that we have relevant data and not for data from 300 miles away in central Texas of a population 900 town that they, that they gave us on one of those. And so, one of the issues with that rate, that water and sewer study was, is that we kinda gave them their staff direction at that time, and that didn't get communicated back to that consultant. And so when we got the second study back, it was basically just the same information over there. So, no, I, I just mentioned that because that, you know, as a council, we looked at that to see how we can solve or lower the water and sewer rates for our citizens, because they're fairly high. Um, and they, the, the bill's been going up exponentially for, you know, the last several years. I don't know how much room we had to flex in that, but I guess also going forward, you know, if we can look at, if we have money left over that's not being allocated to our capital improvements, well then maybe we can apply that. well, then maybe we can apply that to getting, you know, a reduction for the water and sewer rate, and/or both, so.
Yeah, it's- I'll be completely frank with you. I would be shocked if there's any type of study that shows water rates going down. I've not been in any community, I mean, especially when you get outside of the I-35 corridor, water is- I mean, in some cities, that's all, and that's what keeps them up at night. Coming from, you know, the Panhandle, Permian Basin, out in that way, all the state revenue, and we're kind of, we're lucky in the sense that we do have the TRA in some of these ginormous, you know, water districts that service a bunch of area, but in big parts of the state, they don't have that, and water's drying up all the time. So, these projects that the state, you know, kind of has on, you know, that's the water supply issue is one that the legislature's been struggling, wrestling with with for several years. You know, we would certainly do everything we could to keep rates down and keep them stable, maybe limit the rate of increase, but I just- And certainly, we would do everything we can to lower them if it's possible, and, you know, we still have the responsible thing to do, obviously. But I just don't want to set any type of expectation that we would use money to buy the rate down, if you will, only to turn around and have to increase it again a year or two later.
One of the things that we discussed last year in that conversation was, is so if you went back and looked from, and I probably, I know that I still have the data, and Ms. Kirkendall helped me with this last year as well, and we were kind of bouncing this off each other. But, so if you went back and looked from October of 2023 to October of 2022, out of that 12-month period, there was only one month where we actually used all of the water that we were allocated, and then we were paying for this much amount of water, but we were only using 42% of that. And so, I know that part of that conversation at that time that we were kind of trying to brainstorm, you know, fix that, is maybe sell some of the excess to the other water providers in the area that we're being billed for, that we're not otherwise using. And so, I don't know if maybe, at some point, we can kind of factor that all in and maybe help adjust some of that. So, anyway, I just, I'm saying that because it doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about, but going forward, and then, you know, when we finalize this, and if y'all are looking at this and going, "Well, you know, hey, we could drop the rate 5 cents", you know, or something, if we can, but if we can't, then we can't.
Anything else on water revenues, water sewer revenues?
So, we did have a study, or is there one currently in progress?
One got started. They actually reached out to, I think, Chief Groom in the interim period back in January, I think, and then they recently kind of tried to touch base again, and I've conversated with them via email. I did tell them we were in the middle of a budget, and they would be happy to come back and kind of get the process restarted. I told them that once we got over the lines, kind of the biggest chunk of the budget stuff, I would look at what they already had, but it's likely they're going to restart. They didn't have a whole lot. My understanding is they didn't really have a- They didn't get too far into it before it got shut down, or got put on hold, rather.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the remainder, again, non-departmental, this is another one of those things that we used to have everything in the Water and Sewer Fund administratively and some other things, and all in non-departmental. And then, back in 2022, we started segregating that out. Now, another thing that we're doing is, again, consolidating some of our salary positions in administration, rather than splitting them up amongst the departments within the fund, because it doesn't change the bottom line for the fund. It just makes it more difficult accounting-wise to have, like Kyle's salary, split up four different ways within the same fund. It just actually is easier for staff at the end of the day, and it doesn't change the bottom number. So, I've never quite understood why you have, in the same fund, right, the Water and Sewer Fund, Sewer Department, Water Department, you know, and then, for Kyle especially, and then on the general fund side, streets and parks. That, why is 25% of his salary going into those different places? So, when you see this big jump in the administration salary line, that's why it is, is we're consolidating those positions into that one department. And of course, that's going to obviously have a big, make a big, have a big impact on the bottom line. The only other changes there, as I already mentioned, was the class and comp update, you know, Water and Sewer paying 50% of that, and then the move over to Fund View, paying half of that, right? And then here, we've got, it's in the Materials and Supplies, the bottom line number there, under Capital Outlay at 12,000, it's for geolocating equipment for our lines, our water and sewer lines. I mentioned we've got a lot of maps that are accurate, a lot of them are hand-drawn. This is going to dovetail with the GIS software that we're going to be requesting, that's going to allow us, from both in the office and in the field, to map things. We just have a lot, there's a lot of technology available to us that we don't have, that we need that, especially with our staffing levels, will make it much, much easier to get stuff done with a smaller crew. And then, as we grow, obviously adding people. But these are two of the pieces of IT that we have available to us that can help immensely. I'm really surprised we don't already have it. You know, when you have these smaller, kind of, you know, growing rural communities still, a lot of institutional knowledge, you know, leaves. You know, you have somebody who wrote down, or drew a map back in the day, and they took it with them, or it has, you know, coffee destroyed it or something, you know. But this will all be software-based, and it's something that, again, is going to be cloud-based, and you can give different people different access to it. So, again, like when we, Public Works works with planning and development a lot, there's a lot of overlap there. So, they would also be able to access that stuff and do some stuff in the GIS system that helps planning as well. So, there's some, you know, economy of scale there. Those are the main changes administratively. On the water, nothing too out of the ordinary in terms of just some increases, in terms of increased costs and then personnel lines. You know, inflation and whatnot. And then, sewer, the only real significant change there is the request for an additional person, a new person, to be added to that division. There is another request that I didn't quite sneak in there for, on the street side, for a parallel or a mirrored person there, for an additional one. And I really do think after getting some of these numbers late, that might be something we're going to be able to squeeze in, because I know that's another thing, we have not departments of one, but divisions of two. You know, we'll have like a street crew leader, and then one maintenance worker, and that's the entire department, right? So, we're going to do, where, you know, Kyle has requested some reorganization there, and we're going to, which doesn't change the budget, it just changes the, kind of, deficiencies of how the teams work, and adding a new person there, I think is going to help balance that out. And if we do get to the point where we add it in streets, it'll help that as well. So, that's the only change in the sewer department. And then finally, that sanitation, which is all pass-through, trash pickup and whatnot, so. Any further questions? Dang, tried to hurry through it. Is there anything in the format that you would like to see that's not there? Like to see more of? Don't like to see? Okay?
No, I think it was great, much better. Yeah.
Thank you.
Very well explained.
Yes. Yes. Okay, with nothing else further, I'm going to move on to item number six, the public hearing and action item. We conduct a public hearing to consider amending Chapter 34, zoning, Article 1 in general, by repealing in their entirety, Section 34-13, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Section 34-14, Board of Adjustment. Ms. Green?
Mayor, Council, this is really housekeeping. The intention, the intent of this is to keep all the boards, commissions, and committees in one area. Right now, the Plan and Zoning and the Board of Adjustments are in the Code of Ordinance. And so, anything that needs to change within those boards, as in terms, places, we have to have a public hearing, really two public hearings, one before Plan and Zoning, and then Council. So, this, if it's passed tonight, we'll take it out of the zoning ordinance and create a new chapter within the code, Chapter 36. And so, everything is located in one area. And this really matches what y'all did for B. And going forward, all the boards will be put into this chapter. And if y'all have any questions?
Council, any questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing at 8:08 PM for this item. If anyone wishes to speak, they can step forward. Okay, if no one wishes to speak, I will close this public hearing at 8:10 PM. Okay. Discuss, consider an ordinance amending Chapter 34, zoning, Article 1 in general, by repealing in their entirety, Section 34-13, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Section 34-14, Board of Adjustment. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Not opposed, motion carries 4-0. Moving on to item number seven, executive session in accordance to Texas Government Code, Section 51.001. The city council will recess and the executive session close being to discuss the following. Section 51.071, consultation with the city attorney. Number one, discussion of the city attorney receiving legal advice regarding pending or contemplated litigation regarding Arrington Outdoor Advertising Incorporated. We will recess to executive session at 8:11 PM. We will recess to executive session at eight eleven P M.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll reconvene us at 8:54 PM back in open session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of executive session? Okay, none. Okay, moving on to item eight, items for future agendas. Josh, you might walk me through this again because this is a new item. This is a new thing for us, so I want to make sure I do this right.
Yeah, so we added, or I added this to the agenda just to give everybody in the council a chance to, if you have had something on your mind that you would like to staff to research or bring to the council at some point, or as a group, we've already talked about something before that you guys want to talk about again, it gets everybody on the same page. And there's recent, I guess, recent events have made it very difficult and challenging to keep everything straight, coming from different angles and different people and different organizations and everything. So when it comes to you guys at least, that, you know, so staff can kind of get a heads up on stuff, especially if we're going to have to do research and bring you guys information, but also so that your fellow council people can be on, you know, aware of what may be going on. Because there have been a couple of times where there's been, you know, initiative spearheaded or an idea, you know, has kind of taken off and not everybody has known about it. You know, no, I think not unintentionally, but it's just kind of worked out one way. So adding this to the agenda, I think, just allows for that opportunity. If you don't have anything, that's fine, but typically the way, you know, this mayor would go down the road and ask anybody and it's yes, this, or no, I don't have anything.
Okay. I will start with myself first. If we can research about possibly allowing voter registration during city count, before the meeting starts, I'm not sure if that's allowed or not, I'm not sure what the law is on that, Mr. Holla, just FYI. Voter registration, it was a good turnout, we had some people registered last, the other night for that event. And then also, for me, it's, Michael, we had the ordinance, you wrote up the ordinance about the no insurance towing, correct? Did I have, okay, I just have, apparently I forgot to submit it to Chief Groom and Josh, so that'll be another item, just that, I'll send that to you here momentarily when we're done. But that's allowing law enforcement to tow for, when they have someone stop for no insurance, a lot of the tow vehicles, which, Chief, remember quickly, it's a, we don't have that tool now, right? But it may not be used, but at least it's available to officers if they need to do so, okay. Those are my, huh? No, we don't have it, no. Some cities do allow that, but some cities don't, we do not. But those are the only two items that I have. Ms. Hoffman, let's start with you. Any things you want to add for possible future agenda items, that way the staff can be aware. Okay. Councilman Bovens? Mayor Protem? Oh, hold on.
I don't have anything, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did you start that here?
Councilwoman Hoffman did not have anything. Mayor Protem did not have anything, he just, he fooled me. Councilwoman Kaiser? Councilwoman Hamm? Anything?
I don't, I don't think I had anything. Maybe I can add the mural information that I sent the other day. Because I know in the past, there's been a couple of people asked about putting murals out, like on the side of the Soviet Center, and I'd sent you some ordinance information from Paris, Texas that mentions that.